It looks like it's black.
When I see things in here, it's just like white out.
They're not us, though.
Whoa, leave your hand, let me see.
Oh, really?
There we are.
You're on.
Oh, hold on. Ah, you're good.
Let me know when you're set, Brennan. You're good? Okay, I'd like to call this public hearing for a local law entitled amendment to section two fifty thirty-one of the town code, alternate care facilities to order. If we could all please stand and pledge the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I like that. The town clerk will read the public hearing notice.
Please take notice that the town of Clinton will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December thirteenth, 2022, at the Town of Clinton Town Hall, 1215 Center Road, Reinbeck, New York, at 6:00 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter is reached on the agenda concerning proposed local law of 2022 entitled Amendment to Section Two Fifty Thirty-One of the Town Code, Alternate Care Facilities pursuant to Article Sixteen of the New York Town Law. This local law will take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. Complete copies of the proposed local law are available at the Town of Clinton Clerk's office for inspection during regular business hours. All interested persons and citizens shall have an opportunity to be heard on said proposal at the date, time, and place aforesaid.
Okay, welcome. Looks like we're talking about something of interest to the community tonight. Before we get going, I'm gonna just wanted to lay out some ground rules of how it's gonna work tonight. So, we do not plan on voting on this amendment at tonight's regular town board meeting, which takes place after the public hearing. We are here to listen and then take an appropriate amount of time to consider all of the comments we received before making a final decision. At the end of the public hearing, our town attorney Shane Egan, who is not yet here, will come and will speak. He will be the last one to speak, so when we're done with everybody, we're gonna have Shane speak. He's gonna give an overview of what this amendment is, how we got here, and what we intended to accomplish. So, at the beginning, I will read the five emails that we have so far that I received to my office regarding this public hearing. So, I'm gonna read those first, and then we'll open it up to comments to the room. You come up to the microphone right here to your right. It is helpful to us, but not required, that you state your name and the road you live on. All comments should be directed to the five town board members up here. Please don't direct any questions or comments to Cornerstone representatives or to other audience members. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes out of respect for others that would like to have an opportunity to speak. If that isn't enough time for you, you can please put your comments in writing and send them to my email address, townsupervisor@townofclinton.com. In the interest of respecting everyone's time, we ask that everyone only speak once, that all comments are kept relevant to the law that is on the table, and if someone, say, makes a comment that is exactly the same as what you intend to say, I don't want to tell anybody that they can't speak, but maybe they come up to the microphone and say, hey, I agree 100% with John Doe that spoke earlier. Thank you very much. So, we don't have to keep hearing the same comments over and over. As a general rule, during public hearings, we are not going to respond to any comments or questions directed to us. Please understand that we are not trying to be rude. This doesn't indicate that we haven't heard you, or that we agree or disagree. Our job is to be here to listen, not to talk. So, in closing, please don't interrupt those that are speaking with audible reactions. Many of us are neighbors, and I expect all of us to treat our neighbors with respect and civility. And so, with that, my other thought that I had is considering, well, it's like a wedding. There's two sides here in the room. So, maybe we can alternate, like, people from one side and then someone from the other side, and, you know, so it's not a overwhelming thing on either side. So, we're gonna open it up to comments now. You can police yourselves.
Can you read the emails?
Oh, yeah. Hold on. I'm sorry. I was gonna read the emails. Thank you.
Wait right there.
I'm sorry.
You can wait up here.
You can wait up here. The first one was from, first one is from Hamad Anvari. "To whom it may concern, I am a direct neighbor to Cornerstone, and I have concerns with the current state of Cornerstone and their possible expansion. The owner of this facility, through a private equity group, has very checkered history and multiple lawsuits. I am concerned that the community it supposedly serves and the quality of service may not be top of mind. This facility was built over half a century ago, and from my research, remains on private sewer and well. I would like to know what updates to accommodate the increased beds in violation of code they have made to the water sewer disposal systems. Are these systems outdated? Have they been inspected? What are the noise and security protocols, and has security been increased, given the large increase in attendance? Are there business hours, or are people allowed to come and go in all hours of the night as they please? Every day, I observe many multiple vehicles coming in and out of the facility at all hours. Is a background check done for criminal history or violent tendencies? How dangerous are these people that are right next to our families? How long is a typical stay? What percentage of the admittance is local versus out of state? What is Cornerstone doing to benefit the lake or area and its residents? I believe Silver Lake is a unique community of tight-knit residents that care deeply about their home, fellow neighbors, and its coexistence with our conservation district and landscape, and hope the board considers the long-running interest in preserving the integrity of our community and fostering a warm, safe, and welcoming environment for future families and residents. There is a notable difference between the property's roots as a small lodge versus the secretive drug rehab facility. It has been transformed into, it has been transformed into against many of the longtime residents' interests. Thank you for your time and consideration." The second email we have is from Stephen Rotundo and Sarah Evans on Deer Hill. "I'm writing regarding the public hearing on zoning changes for the Town of Clinton Tuesday, December thirteenth. I would like to express my concerns over any changes to the current zoning restrictions in District C zones. We are a supporter of the great work alternative care facilities provide to the public. However, they need to follow the rules. Our concern is over changing the zoning restrictions to provide the right to expand and how those changes will affect the environment. I am sure you are aware the facility in question is located in the Conservation Agricultural Residential District, surrounding our three lakes and aquifers, Silver Lake, Mud Pond, and Long Pond. We believe any changes that allow expansion will threaten the fragile ecosystem that surrounds these precious waters and wetlands. There is a reason the restrictions were put in place to begin with, and changing it now has the potential to damage our aquifer and our drinking water. Nobody plans for environmental disasters, but when it happens, everyone asks, how could this have happened? Well, here we are. You have a decision to make. Is it worth the risk? In August 2022, the Zoning Board of Appeals heard all the arguments and voted to reaffirm the District C code and not allow an increase in population. They made the right decision, and the town should stand by it and enforce the rules that we, as a community, need to follow. Furthermore, we are concerned that any changes to the restrictions will set a precedent that threatens the integrity and enforceability of our town code in the future. We respectfully ask that you not change the current restrictions and protect our town and our waters." The next one is Larry Friedman. "I have been a resident of Clinton for forty-nine years, having raised my family on Hollow Road just east of Clinton Hollow and now living on Oak Tree Drive by, or Oak Tree Road by Silver Lake. During this time, I have been a part of the effort to preserve the integrity of the rural nature of our community, initially being a part of the startups of the Conservation Advisory Council and the Scenic Roads Committee. Then serving on the BAR for ten years, I am strongly opposed to any of the changes to the zoning law for the Conservation District, which would authorize the increase of allowable beds at Cornerstone, which is already a non-conforming facility. Thank you for your consideration of this request." The next one's from Bronwyn Bevan on Clinton Hollow Road, or Center Road. "I just read the Cornerstone situation on Nextdoor.com. I don't have all of the details, could not find them on the town website, and trust that you will do the right thing. However, since I can't attend the meeting on Tuesday, I wanted to voice my concern about any illegal expansion and violation of zoning laws. Based on the information shared on the website, this appears to be particularly problematic, given the property is possibly up for sale. I agree with others that zoning laws ought to be vigorously enforced, and most especially when what is being proposed affects the view sheds, ecosystems, historical quality, watershed, and quality of life of others who live in the Town of Clinton. Precedent matters, as no doubt the lawsuit is making clear, and I hope that, thinking about the future rather than only the present, you will stand firm in this case." And finally, we have one from Aaron Hagadorn on Deer Hill Road. "My family and I have resided on Deer Hill Road for the last twelve years. Being a direct neighbor of Cornerstone of Reinbeck, for the duration of that time, I have witnessed and experienced the degradation, degradation of quality of life and the increased draw on the community's resources, police, fire department, ambulance services, as the facility's occupancy has steadily and illegally increased. I strongly oppose any change to the zoning law for the Conservation District that will exonerate past illegal expansions, as this will set a horrible precedent going forward and permit future increases to occupancy that will further add to the environmental pollution and increase the burden on our community resources." So, with that, I would ask that we start.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Brad Cole, and I live on Silver Lake on Deer Hill Road. As neighbors of Cornerstone, I, we, a bunch of my neighbors are here, all support the need for drug rehab. We all have friends and relatives who have been through this to one degree or another, and we realize how important it is for all of us in the community. So, as we are neighbors of Cornerstone, nobody in this, in my group here wants to shut Cornerstone down. Cornerstone applied to expand their facility. This summer, the Town of Clinton Zoning Board ruled Cornerstone had already expanded illegally and must be in compliance before any expansion will be considered, thus denying their request for expansion. Cornerstone's response to the Zoning Board's decision for expansion and forgetting their illegal prior expansion was to sue the Town of Clinton, along with concerned neighbors who've spoken up. Cornerstone is, in effect, saying, your laws and rules do not apply to us. That's how I hear it. Cornerstone is betting that the Town of Clinton will roll over, because they do not want to deal with a lawsuit. It's a bully tactic. I get it. It happens. It's public record that Cornerstone is in the process of selling, and if they sell with a higher bed capacity, they will make more money. So, Cornerstone cashing out, leaving their soon-to-be ex-employees and the rest of the community with a very large entity or development that understands that the rules that the Town of Clinton makes does not necessarily apply, and that the community and the landscape of Clinton, its lakes and waterways will bear the burden of its repercussions when other developers want to come to Clinton. I think this ruling is setting up a fundamental change for our town and our community. I've been vocal about this for the last week or so, and I've realized that very few people know anything about what's going on here. Obviously, we all do. I was happy to hear that you will not be voting on this tonight. I would have proposed you push it off another sixty days, or else make a public referendum, so everybody can be informed as to what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Steve Rathgen, and I live over on Pumpkin Lane. And we've lived in this area for thirty-six years. And I've had a relationship with Cornerstone for over thirty-six years, back to when it was Reinbeck Lodge for a successful living. Before that, it was Stanbrook Dude Ranch. And I understand that the folks have those concerns, but I've never seen any of those concerns, and I'm there quite a lot. And my company does quite a lot of business with them. I'm not here because they asked me. I'm here because some of my best friends are former alcoholics and drug addicts, and this is a place where they go for help. This was in a community, and all of these Cornerstone folks that are here, it's a big family, and I would have to imagine they're one of the biggest employers in this town. And when I watched the last session on TV, some of the folks, they said there was drug paraphernalia, and the place was unkept, and there was all kinds of issues going on with residents. Every resident I've ever met there is there to heal themselves, and they've been nothing but respectful. I've made deliveries myself up there multiple times. Some of my friends work there. And I'm asking the town board to reconsider this of the future, because their census over there goes up and goes down as the years, as the years go by. You know, right now, their census is low, because it's, Christmas is coming. But right after Christmas, when all the folks that are having problems in their job, they're looking for a quality rehab center to go to, to try to heal their needs. One of the things that I think that many people in the town don't know, that Oasis is an agency that's run by New York State that is very restrictive on the way they deal with places like Cornerstone, and they're stringent. And Cornerstone has met those things with the state, Oasis. And again, the town board, I know, over the years, there's some issues going on. But I would, there's somewhere, there's gotta be a compromise. Because you all know about business. If you have forty people, you can make things go better than you can on twenty people. There is an expense to running Cornerstone. So, if Oasis says they can have ninety-nine, I think the town board should, could reconsider that, because wherever that number falls, there is a break-even point, and you need to consider that. Just like with our budget here, there's a break-even point. If not, you have to raise taxes. So, thank you again for the people at Cornerstone that showed up. Thank you for the people that maybe are against Cornerstone. But somewhere, we need to have a place in our community that can help those people in need, because it could be your son, it could be your daughter, it could be your mother or father, okay? Thank you again for allowing me the time to speak.
Thank you, Steve.
Hi, I'm Wendy Edelman. I live on Deer Hill Road on Silver Lake, and I have been living on Silver Lake since 1998. I bought my home knowing and supporting the sixty-eight-bed facility known as Cornerstone, and I am stating that I am not opposed to having a rehab facility in my community, and I resent any implications to the contrary. I am concerned that the proposed zoning change will allow for the increased density of properties in Zone C. Much of Cornerstone's property is located on islands and peninsulas that are uninhabitable. Cornerstone states that they have forty acres, however, the only usable land consists of twenty-eight acres, and actually, eleven of those acres are underwater. Will you allow them to misrepresent the actual usable area in order to expand? Of all the neighboring towns, only Reinbeck has an alternate care facility which is similar to Cornerstone. They have a zoning law that is specifically designed for it. From the Reinbeck Code, I quote, "Any ACF that will house more than twelve ACF residents shall require a site not less than fifty acres, and the total population thereon, including residents and staff employees, shall not exceed four persons per acre." With twenty-eight acres, that's one hundred and twelve total population, including employees. Cornerstone has fifty-five full-time employees, which would allow for fifty-seven patients. With the actual seventeen habitable acres, it's even less. Are you proposing to allow any higher density than that, and why would you do so in our environmental conservation district? In 2017, Cornerstone proposed increasing their population to two hundred patients. This proposal also included increases in staff, along with a new physical plant, including new residence hall, new admission administration building, new recreation courts, paths, new pump house, water storage, and sanitary systems, new and expanded parking areas and driveways for deliveries and services. What guarantee can you give our community that this proposal, if re-submitted by the soon-to-be new owner, will be rejected? And what guarantee do you have that the planning board will not be sued if they do reject any proposals to increase the facility at that time? I submit that not standing your ground now against increased density will only bring unwanted development, not only on Silver Lake, but throughout our town. Outside developers will find it very appealing to turn our camps and lakes into profit-making facilities, thus changing the very nature of the Town of Clinton. I ask that the board take their time to review all of the ramifications of this zoning change. We should be allowed at least ninety days to inform the public and to give the board an opportunity to do their due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is David Bachner. I'm the Executive Vice President of Administration and Clinical Services at Cornerstone. I've held that position for almost fifteen years, but what I really am at heart is a social worker. I've been one for more than thirty years, and it's been my life's work. On behalf of Cornerstone, we want to express our appreciation to the town for introducing and entertaining this proposed amendment to the zoning code and to the ACF provisions. Hopefully, it is obvious to the board, to this board, that Cornerstone does good things. Specifically, Cornerstone saves lives. And while this public hearing is about the local law, not about us...
I'm so sorry.
It's okay. We want this board to know that Cornerstone has always strived to be a good neighbor. On the rare occasion that a complaint has been brought to us directly, we address it as quickly as possible. But being a good neighbor is a two-way street. We can't address issues if we don't know they exist. I'm sure you'll hear from some of our neighbors tonight that Cornerstone violated the law for years. That's simply not true. While we were told in the past that an increase to our physical facility needed planning board approval, it was only in 2021 that it was made clear that we needed to go to the planning board to increase our bed count from sixty-six to ninety-nine. That's why Cornerstone was already before the planning board, when the neighbors brought their appeal to the ZBA. Frankly, I think the fact that the ZBA had to grapple with the language of the zoning code to decide whether the ACF provisions, as written, applied to Cornerstone or not, and ultimately decided that it didn't, should be enough to show that Cornerstone was not acting in bad faith. The whole point of the town's proposed amendment to the zoning code is to allow Cornerstone to continue to process its application before the planning board, and we'd rather do that than pursue the litigation challenging the ZBA interpretation. Cornerstone, of course, supports the adoption of this local law. Let us proceed before the planning board to memorialize the increase in beds, and let Cornerstone continue to serve this community and provide its necessary services unimpeded, as we have been doing for the last forty years. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. My name is Kat Maxianova. My husband and I live within two hundred feet of Cornerstone. We have been in the community for twelve years, and I have two children in Reinbeck Schools. When we bought our house, we knew Cornerstone was a rehab. We supported their mission and do not want our community to lose this resource. I am also named as an interested party in a Cornerstone lawsuit against EBA, just for full disclosure. In the lawsuit materials, David Bachner, who just spoke, calls himself a social worker at heart. Well, let me tell you about the social worker. In 2020, our community proactively reached out to him to start building a relationship with Cornerstone. One of the first things Mr. Bachner told us is that he comes to Reinbeck once a month, he has a standing table at Terrapin, and coming here is much more enjoyable now than he can stay at Chateau Mirabeau, because it is more comfortable than Beekman Arms. He also made sure I knew he was very chummy with the regulators in Albany. He almost gleefully stated that he is very, very close with the commissioner and legal department that oversee them. It came across as intimidation and a veiled threat. Soon, those threats became very open. When they realized we have done research and uncovered their past illegal expansions and questioned the practices, they unleashed a campaign of intimidation and slander to shut us up. Their lawyer, Warren Raplonsky, went as far as to tamper with the language of our town code to fabricate ethical violations, violation accusations against me personally. It is ironic, given that Cornerstone had employed the former town planning board chairman, Michael McCormick, to help them push through their revised expansion plans. By the way, Mr. McCormick was still in his planning board seat when Cornerstone put forth their original two-hundred-bed expansion in 2017, that one you just talked about. And then, to solicit support letters, they lied to anyone who would listen that this community wants to shut them down. I read the letters, and it broke my heart. There were some beautiful letters from Cornerstone patients. Then I realized there were not just their past patients, but many were from patients who were still in treatment when those letters were written, with their full names, all written roughly on the same day. Did Corus to lie to these vulnerable people, whose lives were literally in their hands, put them in a room and tell them to write support letters? Did these patients know their names would be a part of public record forever? What about their patient privacy? Did they sign a HIPAA release? And if so, where is it? Because I haven't seen any of the materials. Are Mr. Bachner's friends in Albany paying attention? Would they want their friends and family writing letters instead of getting treatment if they needed one? I know you're facing a hard decision, and it's scary. There is a bunch of business guys here from Westchester, New York City, New Jersey, with friends in Albany, who will stop literally and nothing that they realize their payday and allows them to cash out. Please take your time as you consider this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Kat. Anyone on this side? Now that we've had comments from both sides, I just want to remind everybody that this is a public hearing about an amendment to a zoning code, and that if we can keep the comments to that instead of accusations, that will be...
Hi, my name is Erin Sacks, and I live on Silver Lake. My husband and I have lived here full-time for about five years. I grew up in a house with, with an addict, and rehab saved my family's life, and it is something that I hold dear. And I, like other people in this community, resent that we're being, that you're being told that we want to get rid of a rehab. I'm only gonna, I'm only gonna state a couple of things. First is, there is a sale that is either imminent or may have already, already happened, and I wanted to point out that this is the application for the sale of Cornerstone. And if you're interested in it, the paperwork will be at the back. But one thing to note, in the application, sorry, I'm a little nervous also, because I spoke up here at the public hearing the last time there was a hearing, and I too have been served and am now being sued, just like the town, as well as other residents. So, it's a little scary, you have to imagine. I don't have a lot of money, and I can't fight the big, the big guys. I just want to point out, in the paperwork that is available to anyone, and this is all on public file, in the Cornerstone application to sell, they have stated on record there will be no changes to the population served, nor the number of clients, or the current staffing as a result of this application. Now, I don't know where the sale is at this point, but I do think that that would be a worthy question to ask. And then the other thing that I just wanted to offer is that this is paperwork from the New York Controller. And the New York Controller did an assessment a couple of years ago on the new owner for Cornerstone. And I highly recommend that the board at least take a good look and read so that you're well-informed, which leads me to my final thing, which is, I would ask that, that we would be given more time. I think the Airbnb situation took years, and I'm not sure why. We all spent our hard-earned money and time trying to, trying to abide by the same laws as everyone else, and because someone didn't like the laws, and they want to sue you guys, now, three months later, you want to change laws. I don't understand. And I'm just...
Because under New York law, if you don't name the individuals that will be affected by the lawsuit, i.e. the people who brought the challenge, they're considered under New York law necessary parties, and you could be thrown out of court because you didn't bring them into the case and give them their opportunity to represent themselves and argue why the determination should be upheld. So that's an explanation of why we had to name individuals who were represented by, you know, Tony Kyle Barnett, who we know and respect. So that's just the explanation, and please, if you have any good songs, keep playing them on your phone. I like the background music. So we wanted to thank this board for taking up of the local law, amending the ACF provisions of the zoning code. Obviously, as you heard, Cornerstone supports the local law, and we're going to try to save you your time. I'm probably going to be the last speaker from Cornerstone. I think we just didn't want to get up here and repeat it. Plus, as I'm going to mention in my testimony, many of the issues about Cornerstone, the operation, possible impacts, that's really not for tonight's determination on the local law, but I'll get into that in a second. Now, it's unfortunate that the matter is before the court. Believe me, this was last resort on our part. However, I was at the ZBA hearing, as some of you, you know, I know were. And based upon the testimony of many of the ZBA members the night of the vote, many of the ZBA members felt constrained by the language of the code as written. And that included that they viewed the code as a per se prohibition on any expansion of a non-conforming use. That was some of the testimony of board members, who gave very heartfelt explanations for their vote. And that the alternate care facility regulations governing specifically increases in resident population and expansion limited the planning board jurisdiction to only conforming uses. And that, and as you know, the local law that's before you does no more than clarify the language of the law to reflect the process that the town contemplated in the first instance when it enacted the alternate care provisions, allowing the planning board, which has the expertise in this area, to review and determine what is a permissible expansion of an alternate care facility and modify the site plan accordingly, if they do, based upon long-established legal principles whether such use, such expansion, would result in any significant additional adverse impacts to the surrounding community. That was the law that was written. It didn't mention conforming, and it didn't mention non-conforming, but the board felt that it was constrained to only allow for conforming. The standard that I just articulated is consistent with prevailing New York law. It is what the town's building inspector found in his prior determination. After 16 years of the beds actually existing, he found that it was, if that expansion could be allowed, but they have to go to the planning board to make that determination. And let alone all the waste of resources and time and alike, having that litigation, prosecuting that litigation. Planning boards are set up to specifically and exactly make these types of determinations, and in fact, it's what your code provided for. So as I mentioned, Cornerstone has supporters here in the audience, a lot of them. They're not going to get up here and speak. And, you know, they've operated, I don't need to tell you, for 40 years in this community. They're not new. They've existed pretty much, much longer than many of the people that you will hear testify tonight. For 16 years, they've had, I guess, the increase in beds, no increase in physical facilities, and whatever impacts may have existed, those impacts had existed for 16 years. So this is not about Cornerstone saving lives, this, what's before you tonight. And it's not about the complaints of certain neighbors, what they think the new impacts of these additional beds might be. It's about solely about the board respectfully considering whether to amend the code to be in line with what many thought was its original intent, to let the board, the planning board, do its job and make the determination whether the expansion of the facility or expansion population would result in any new significant adverse impacts. It's almost exactly the language that your code provides. Assuming that the local law is adopted, Cornerstone would return to the planning board, continue what has already been in process. Planning board will take evidence. All the evidence in many of what you'll hear tonight will be repeated to the planning board. The planning board will deal with real evidence. They'll deal with data. They're used to dealing with that, empirical data, evidence. They'll establish a baseline. What were the impacts before the 16 beds, additional beds? What's the impacts now? And they'll make the determination based on law. The code, the law, allows the expansion of non-conforming uses if they don't result in any new significant adverse impact. It's what your code talks about. So obviously, the issue of whether this facility has been sold or not sold doesn't really go to the law, won't even go really to the planning board.
With due respect, we're well over the three-minute limit.
It runs with the land. So I'll finish up. Thank you for your indulgence, you know, since no one on our end is going to be speaking.
And I was taking that into consideration.
I've saved you a lot of time. So appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
My name's Kyle Barnett. I'm with the law firm of Vandewater in Vandewater, and I represent some of the members of the community here who are obviously opposed to the expansion, and yes, and were opposed or took a position on the appeal, excuse me, that was before your ZBA. I'm pleased to hear that your folks are going to take a little bit of time to consider some of the comments, because originally, one of my clients spoke to me and advised that she spoke with a member of the board here, and she was told that this is pretty much a fait accompli, that this bill was getting passed, this local law was getting done. I was really disappointed to hear that. I hope that's not the case, but that's apparently some information that got passed on to her. It was once a time where I sat sort of where you folks are. I was actually a town board member myself, a former supervisor. It's a thankless job, so I certainly do appreciate the effort all of you are putting in. But one of the things that I often tried to make sure I did before making a decision was having all the facts, having all the information, making sure that I got all the other stakeholders involved in this process. One of the things I also expected, I was a little disappointed, was that as this local law was being worked out, knowing that I represented some stakeholders, i.e. citizens of this town, we would be involved in that process. Unfortunately, that obviously turned out not to be the case. We learned of the draft of the local law probably around the same time you folks, many of you folks did, or other members of the public. I got to imagine that Cornerstone had some hand in at least being able to work with the current local law that you guys are considering, because what's the purpose of it? Purpose of it is to settle a lawsuit. So obviously, if Cornerstone isn't approving or aware of the local law that's been drafted before you, you're not going to be able to settle the lawsuit by simply passing it if you're not certain that it's something that they've already taken into consideration. So what I'm concerned about is, by passing the local law as is, you'll maybe fix a temporary problem, which is the lawsuit against the ZBA, and I understand that's the motivation, but you may create a bigger one. The idea that, well, you know, and as Mr. Zarin knows, I have enormous respect for him, but I am going to disagree with him on a few points. One of which is the idea that this will, if the local law gets passed, this will go to your planning board, and your planning board will do what planning boards do, and they'll take into all the considerations, and they'll consider adverse impacts, and then they'll make a decision. Well, folks, if you think that that decision is, if that decision's adverse to Cornerstone, they're going to go home, pack up their bags, and call it a day? That's being a little naive, isn't it? I mean, after all, you have a ZBA made up of hard-working volunteers. Their job is to hear appeals. So if a building inspector makes a determination that folks don't like, you go to the ZBA, and they do their job. And that's what happened here. Well, guess what happened after they did their job? Cornerstone sued. And I get it. I get the fear. They're a formidable adversary. Don't get me wrong. They told the ZBA, if you don't do what we like, we're going to sue you. And they kept their promise. Well, that's just what's going to happen if they don't get their special use permit, right? If they don't get their special use permit, you're going to throw this onto your planning board, a bunch of hard-working volunteers. They don't give them the special use permit. I'm sure some of them will be concerned, oh, boy, if I don't, if we don't do what Cornerstone wants, you know, is the town board going to back us up? I mean, they didn't back up the ZBA, and, you know, what are we going to do here? So I'm sure there'll be that pressure. Of course, there's going to be that pressure. They're human beings. But like I said, we can't, Cornerstone's formidable. They'll sue. In fact, being the good neighbor that they are, as mentioned before, they sued individuals personally. And this is where I am going to have to also respectfully disagree with my good friend, Mr. Zarin. They're not necessary parties. They would have been necessary parties if they owned a parcel of the property that was the subject of the lawsuit. But simply being an interested party or being the person who brought the challenge in the first place doesn't make them necessary parties, and I respectfully disagree with that. I truly believe that, and that the reason why they were named as parties is because I think Cornerstone wanted to make a point. So hopefully, and I think they want to make sure everybody here gets that particular point. So I think it's a bit naive to simply think, well, you know, somehow the planning board's going to be able to solve this problem for us, because they're not. And by the way, let's say they get this special use permit, and then they go to expand again because the educated and well-informed people of Oasis decide that that's possible. They once wanted to do 200 beds. Maybe they want to do it again. They go back to the, your local law gets them to go back to the planning board again. And what happens if they don't get their 200 beds? Well, they're going to sue, of course. And this time, they'll have a nice track record, because they'll know that by these lawsuits, the town will cave. That's what we have to do. But like I said before, by solving one problem, are we not creating a bigger one? And what I'm concerned about is this. I've looked at your local law. I've looked at the process that we've been going through here, and I'm concerned that it's going way too fast. And I get it. I get that there's a deadline, because really, the deadline is to get this local law passed before the opposition papers are due on the 78 action, so this way, the town doesn't have to put in a defense. Otherwise, the town's going to have to put in an answer. We've got to put a record together. All that's expensive. It costs money and time.
With respect, Mr. Barnett, I've given you the same five minutes the previous speaker had, so we can wrap it up.
Actually, it was about eight. Okay, it's about eight, but...
I have a stopwatch going, I know.
So that's the concern. So I get there's that deadline. So great, putting it off for 30 days or whatever, maybe that gives some sense that it's being carefully considered. But in fact, it's not going to, because the problems that I see with this local law are systemic. If you pass this local law as is, with the process that's taken place so far, even if you do it next month, you will have created a bigger problem. And my concern is, folks, seriously, my concern is, you will have gotten rid of one lawsuit, perhaps, but simply maybe stepped into another one. The lawsuit you'll be getting rid of is imminently defensible. It's based on arbitrary and capricious, a very high standard that Cornerstone would have to meet. They're not, I would find it surprising if they could, but if you pass the local law with some of the issues that I think you're going to be dealing with, that will not be the case. And thank you very much for the extra time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Going once? Twice? Do I make a motion to close this? Where is it? Seeing no further comments, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we never get this kind of a crowd at a regular town board meeting. So if you're all interested in how the town business operates, you're welcome to stay. We'll take a couple of minutes break, allow people to clear out.
Just adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to adjourn too. I make a motion to adjourn.
Shane and I have discussed, since he came in late, we thought that the comments were good enough, and we don't need his.